That's good. Good. Yep. Okay. Yep. Thanks. Yep. Corinne's just gonna swear in some tellers and then we can get going. Okay, then we're ready to go. Okay, do we have a... Yeah. Do we have a flag? I guess not, but... Yeah, yeah, sure. Yep. Okay, we're all set? All right. We ready to go? Good morning. The constable has confirmed that the warrant for this special town meeting has been properly posted. The town clerk has informed me that there is a quorum present. Special town meeting of the town of Hamilton is now open. Good morning. My name is Bill Bowler and I'm the town moderator. Welcome to the November 14, 2020 special town meeting, and thank you very, very much for coming. To assist me with vote counting, I've appointed four tellers who've been properly sworn. We will start as we always do, saying the Pledge of Allegiance, and I think we'll... So if you'd please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to start with some general reminders. First, if you're a registered voter in Hamilton, you should have picked up a voting clicker, which looks like this. If you haven't and wish to vote, then please get one now at where you came in. Second, please turn off your cellphone to silent. If you need to take or make a call, please leave the meeting to do so. Third, we welcome non-voters to the town meeting, but ask that you sit in the visitors' area, which is located in the back corner. I'd like to introduce the people who are sitting up front, so you all know who they are. Tom McEnany, KP Law, Town Council, excuse me. Corinne Cale, Town Clerk. Joe Demelwitz, Town Manager. Marissa Batista, Finance Director. Can you hear me now? Okay. Again, Tom McEnany, KP Law, Town Council. Corinne Cale, Town Clerk. Joe Demelwitz, Town Manager. Marissa Batista, Finance Director. Sean Farrell, BOS Chair. Bill Olson, Selectman. Rosemary Kennedy, Selectman. Darcy Dale, Selectman. Jamie Knudsen, Selectman. John Prelich, Finance Committee Chair. Christina Shankhargrove, Nick Tenson. David Wanger and Valerie McCormick, all members of the Finance Committee. I've asked non-resident town officials and those assisting the Selectman or Finance Committee to be present here, so they may be available to answer questions. Members of the press and video crew have also been allowed to be present. I hope you all read and brought your copy of the warrant. If you did not, there may still be some extra copies. The agenda for the meeting is the warrant. It was prepared by the Board of Selectmen. To bring an agenda item before the meeting, I will recognize a member of the sponsoring board, committee, or individual, so they can make a motion. If the motion is seconded, I'll recognize the proponent to speak to you about it. Once they're done, I'll open the discussion up to you. If you wish to speak, you must first ask me to recognize you. To save time, I ask that you already be standing at one of the microphones, which are in the center aisle here. Once you're recognized, please state your name and street address. You may then make comments or ask questions about the motion. You will have three minutes to do so. And let me assure you today, three minutes means three minutes. Your comments and questions must be within what we call the four corners of the motion. Please do not make comments about any person who is in favor or against the motion. Just comment on the merits of the motion. And please, no applause. All motions to amend must be submitted to the town clerk in writing. If you need assistance in framing a motion to amend, Town Council will provide you with some assistance. No more than one amendment may be pending at the same time. The vote is first taken on the amendment and then on the main motion. As I mentioned, when a vote is taken, we will be using the electronic voting clickers. Peter Babbel and Sean McPeak of the company Meridia will demonstrate the use of the clickers in just a moment. In the unlikely event that we have trouble with the new technology, we will revert to the use of voter cards, and I'll ask you to raise your voter cards, and I'll then decide visually whether there is the necessary majority or two-thirds. If I'm in doubt, or seven voters question the vote immediately after I declare the outcome, I'll have the vote counted by the tellers. We'll now have the gentleman from Meridia demonstrate the clickers. Yeah, get that.
Thank you, Bill. As you said, my name is Sean. I'm with the voting company, Meridia. And each of you have a clicker in your hand in your voting packet. The clicker looks like it should on the screen here. It's a simple device with five buttons, but the buttons that you should be looking at... That's the voting software, Peter. There we go. So the keypad has five buttons on it. The buttons that you should be focused on is the green button. Green is for yes. If you're for a motion, press the green button. The red button is for no. If you're against the motion, you hit no on the keypad. There's also a third button for abstain. Many towns don't use the abstain function, but if you wish to just announce that you're present but not voting, you can hit the abstain button there. When you press the button, there will be in the screen the words "okay." When you see "okay," that means the system has received your vote. If you wish to change your vote at any time, you can do so as long as the motion is still open. Bill, the moderator, will close the motion and then will announce the tallies. But until that point, if you voted for the motion by hitting the green button and you really feel that you should vote against the motion, you can hit the red button second, and your vote will be against through the red button. As far as the voting software, Peter, if you can put up the voting software, we'll run a quick test question, just to make sure everybody's comfortable with the technology. The question is, is the sky blue? So if you believe the sky is blue, go ahead and hit the green button. If you believe the sky is red, go ahead and hit the red button. Each of the squares that you see on the screen represent a voting device that you have in your hand. They have a number on the back. So as you vote, you'll see the square turn blue. When the vote is closed, we'll simply close the vote, and then we'll show the tallies up on the top of the screen. Typically, we'll give a town 20 seconds, 30 seconds. But the town moderator, it's at his discretion whether to keep the vote open or keep it closed. Typically, when they see enough people have voted, they can go ahead and close the vote. What we'll do now is we'll go ahead and... Peter, if you can close the vote. And then you'll see on the top, the tallies. So the total votes that we collected are, I believe, 87. It's difficult for me to see here. And then there's a tally of green and red and abstain. There's a green bar at the top. When you see a green bar, that means the motion is passed. When you see a red bar, that means the motion has failed. I will be around the town meeting. If anyone with any questions for the voting technology feels their clicker may not be working, just raise your hand. I'll swap it out, and I can give you any instructions. But thank you again for having us here, and I look forward for a successful town meeting.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, we'll now begin going through the articles and the warrant. First, Article 2011-1-1, Article for Consent Motion. I recognize Bill Olson. I'm... Excuse me, just... I'll now read the list of articles to be taken up and voted on as one motion. If you want to ask questions or make comments on an article, shout out "hold" as the list is read. Any article that is held will be deleted from the consent motion and taken up and considered according to its place on the warrant. 2-4, 2-9, 2-10, 2-11, 3-1, 3-2, and 3-3. I recognize Bill Olson.
I move that the articles included on the list of articles for consent motion for this special town meeting, a copy of which has been delivered to the town clerk to be filed with the minutes of this meeting, excepting these motions held, reapproved by one vote. Each motion to be deemed a separate action under the warrant articles having the same corresponding number, and further, that the following amounts be raised and appropriated to fund each of the following articles. Article 2-4, Pool Revolving Fund, $820.75. Article 2-9, Assessment Department Software, $10,000. Article 2-10, Town Clerk and Elections Staffing and Supplies, $29,785. And Article 2-11, DPW Employee Retirement, $5,600.
Is there a second? Okay. I recognize Mr. Olson for discussion.
As we typically do at every town meeting, we seek to include a number of routine but necessary articles that are not controversial in one consent motion. This allows us to limit the duration of the meeting, which, again, this year is even more important to us due to the ongoing pandemic, so we can give more time to issues that are more likely to engender debate.
Okay, Sarah, thank you. Are there any questions or discussion? If not, we can move to a vote. Bear with me a moment. Okay. So you've heard the explanation of how you vote. Oh, it'll be a 30-second period that you can vote, and then we will close the vote and see where we are. So the 30 seconds begins now. Okay, voting is now closed. And as soon as I can... Okay. Okay, the motion passes, and I so declare. As you can tell, the moderator is not what you would call technologically savvy. Okay. Moving on, Article 2-1, Prior Year Bills. I recognize John Prelich.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,084.97 to pay the following bills from a prior fiscal year. $209.97 for Staples Office Supplies, May 2020. $875 for Boport Ambulance Services for the COA, May 2020.
Okay, is there a second? Mr. Prelich?
This article relates to bills from a prior fiscal year for invoices that were not processed in that fiscal year. Generally, this happens when invoices arrive late or they may be misplaced. Given the pandemic, it's actually surprising there are more of these invoices. At any rate, there's no question that the town received these goods and services and that we should appropriate for them.
Any questions or discussion? Okay, this requires a nine-tenths vote. So we'll allow 30 seconds for you to enter your vote. Okay, the vote is closed. The motion passes, and I so declare. And the moderator can still count to 30 in his head. Article 2-2, Capital Expenditures. I recognize John Prelich.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $415,000 from free cash to fund the following purchases and projects identified in the fiscal year 2021 Special Town Meeting Capital Program, which is set forth in Appendix A of the 2020 Appendix Book. ECO Radio Repeaters 2 of 3, $56,000. Highway NPDES Phase 3-5 Compliance, $54,000. Police Patrol SUV, 1 of fleet of 7, $55,000. Facilities DPW Fuel Station Replacement, $250,000.
Is there a second? Mr. Prelich?
This article relates to the funding of certain capital expenditures that appear on the town's FY 2021 capital plan as recommended by the town's capital committee. It's the items marked in blue on that appendix. Briefly, the four items are an upgrade of repeaters for the town's emergency communication system, compliance with EPA regulations on stormwater pollutant runoff mitigation systems, replacement of a police SUV, and the largest item is the removal of the old fuel storage tanks at the DPW yard. Right now, the town is undergoing a pilot with Wenham to use theirs to share their fuel tanks. Whether or not this pilot is successful, we still need to remove the old tanks and either replace them or put a portion of those funds towards the program, the shared program with Wenham. At the end of the day, we recommend, FinCom recommends approval of all of these items. There's a clear need for the town and we recommend the use of free cash for a number of reasons. First, that these expenses are of a one-time nature. Second, the town did end up with more free cash than anticipated at the end of last year due to the spending freeze. And third, given they were up against the Prop 2.5 cap, if we were to appropriate, we would need a Prop 2.5 vote for these items. While we generally caution the use of always using free cash for capital expenditures, in this case, FinCom believes it's warranted and we recommend passage of this item. Because we're using free cash, this will have no effect on the tax rate.
Are any questions or discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll have 30 seconds to enter your vote. Voting is now closed. The motion passes and I so declare. Article, Article 2-3, Water Treatment. I recognize Sean Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to authorize the treasurer to borrow $1 million in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7 or 8, or any other enabling authority for the purpose of funding the design and construction of improvements to the town's water treatment system, including all incidental or related costs, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to apply for any and accept any federal, state, and/or other grants or loans available for the project, and to enter into any and all agreements related thereto, and that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payments of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Is there a second?
Is there a second? Mr. Farrell?
This is to continue the improvements on our water treatment plant. Our Ipswich River Basin, where we get our water from, continues to give us high level of organic, organic material in our water. This allows us to process the water better at our plant and to relieve some of the stress on our wells. We've previously made some investments to this, but this would finish part of the project or this part of the project, the pretreatment. And also, the requested funds would not add any additional impact on the tax rate because it's coming from the Water Enterprise Fund.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote.
Is there a question in the back?
Oh, okay, sorry. Please go to the microphone.
Thomas Sears, Gardner Street. What sort of a system will be cleaning the water? Chlorine or a filtration or UV lights? Is, is that available, that information? Thank you.
Yeah, we looked at two different systems and, Mr. Moderator, if you'll recognize Mr. Olson, our DPW director in the back there, if he could come up and just speak for a quick second about the type of filtration.
Yes, I recognize Tim Olson.
Tim Olson, Director of Public Works. We looked at two different systems for pretreatment. One is a GAC system, the Grandular Activated Carbon, and the other one was an ion exchange system. Looking at both systems, we pilot tested both with our raw, raw water and the GA syst, the GAC system was much more effective in reducing the organics from the raw water.
Any further questions or comments? If not, we'll move to a vote. Allow 30 seconds to enter your vote. Voting is now closed. The motion passes and I so declare. Article 2-5, Community Affordable Housing Trust Grant. I recognize Jay Butler.
Good morning. Jay Butler, 78 Olicott Road, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. I move that the town approve Article 2-5 as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second? Mr. Butler?
This grant request for $200,000 from the Hamilton Affordable Housing Trust is more or less an annual event since the CPC is the prime contributor of money to fund their affordable housing initiatives. In the time since the town adopted the CPA Act in 2005, the CPC and subsequently town meeting have approved a $1,360 for the Affordable Housing Trust. Recently, you may recall that the CPC voted for and town meeting subsequently approved a similar grant request at the Fall 2019 meeting. At that time, the plan was to use those funds combined with others in their reserves to help purchase the property at 434, 436 Asbury Street in support of Habitat Humanity Project to build 10 deed-restricted affordable housing units. However, a combination of a delay in that project and the emergence of a more attractive project with the Trag Earth Companies at 59 to 63 Willow Street for development of 18 affordable housing units caused them to switch gears and support the new project. They are now looking to go back to supporting the Habitat Humanity Project. Thank you.
Mr. Farrell, are you speaking to this? Okay. Are there any questions or comments? If not, we'll go to a vote. 30 seconds, stand to your vote, starting now. Voting is now closed. The motion passes and I so declare. Article 2-6, Community Preservation, First Congregational Church Clock and Belfry. I recognize Jay Butler.
I move that the town approve Article 2-6 as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second? Mr. Butler?
This grant request for $75,000 came from the Director of Operation for the First Congregational Church of Hamilton. The project cost was $116,000 approximately. The ask of the CPC was $110,000 and the CPC voted to push forward this grant request for 75. The CPC is recommending this after discussions and detailed review of the project elements by all concern. These discussions involve review of similarly CPC requests in other communities, the applicability of the mass anti-aid amendment that restricts, under certain conditions, providing municipal funds to houses of worship. This building, which was constructed in 1762 to replace the original Hamilton Meeting House, the Meeting House had been the center of our community since the church was founded in 1714 and through the incorporation of the town in Hamilton in 1792. And it functioned as the town hall until 1897, when the current building was built. The church is located in the Hamilton Historic District and thus listed in the National Register of Historic Places. You may recall a previous CPC grant to this church that was approved in 2008 for the renovation and preservation of the church bell. This request is for the renovation, preservation of the belfry and the clock tower. Thank you.
Thank you. Valerie McCormick is down as...
Hamilton. Up until...
Excuse me, we're gonna have a little more input from town officials and then we'll open it up to questions from the floor. Go ahead. Ms. McCormick?
Valerie McCormick, Finance and Advisory Committee. FinCom has voted for unfavorable action on this request. While we recognize and appreciate the historical significance of the clocks, tower, and belfry, we feel it's an ill-timed and substantial ask for a non-town owed building at this time. While the project's not solely for religious purposes, the church does substantially benefit from the project and with the town paying for it frees up the church's assets for purely religious purposes. And finally, it's not absolutely clear that the town funding this project would be constitutional under Mass law.
Thank you. Any other discussion from town officials before I open it up?
Yeah, I just want to also acknowledge that the Board of Selectmen, although we also appreciate the work of, of the church and the organization, we've also voted unfavorably to recommend action on this motion for the similar reasons through a discussion with the FinCom board.
Okay. Open up for questions and discussion from the floor.
Duke Seaver, Essex Street. Up until, seems to me, a month, a year or two ago, we would put at the end of the article the name of the person who voted for or against this article. And I noticed this year, it didn't happen. It's a 4-1 vote and the one vote should be listed on this like it was other years with their name. So we know in the future if we agree with how they've been voting for us for maybe a reelection or something like that. I just want to know why it wasn't added and we already know who voted unfavorably, which is a good thing.
Okay. If the person, if the individual wants to identify him or herself, they, they can, but I would just point out that votes are votes of the board on these matters, but...
And I'll, I'll address Duke's question. I apologize, Duke, it was an oversight. We do typically write the names of how the votes are and who voted for what. And just for full disclosure, I voted, I was the one in favor. I am also on the CPC board, so full disclosure. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Okay, please come to the microphone and if you try to be at the microphone socially distanced.
Robert, Robert John, Linden Street. Have a question and then a comment. First, for both the FinCom and the Board of Selectmen, have you consulted with the Mass Historical Commission on your concerns about legality and church-state issues?
Does anybody want to address that?
So that is for the FinCom and the Select Board. Did you consult with the Mass Historical Commission?
Do you want to have anything? Oh, I guess we got, okay, I recognize Rosemary Kennedy.
I will tell you that our town council did an analysis of this and perhaps he, he would be able to offer his, the synopsis of his opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We did an analysis of this question, which basically raises an issue under the Anti-Aid Amendment to the Massachusetts Constitution. There's a three-part test that's been set forth in various cases, the most recent case being a case from the town of Acton a few years ago that involved CPC funding for a church-related project. And essentially, there's no real bright line test that, that there's a, the number of different factors that are taken into consideration, including what the motivating purpose of the grant is, whether the grant will have the effect of substantially aiding the church, and whether the grant avoids the risks associated with political and economic abuses that prompted the passage of the Anti-Aid Amendment in the first place. In our opinion, the, the limitation of the funding for the project to the clock tower and the belfry would, in our view, pass constitutional muster. If it doesn't relate to essentially any of the parts of the house of worship in terms of, for example, upgrading stained glass windows to contain religious imagery, it's limited really to the clock tower and to the belfry, which has a significant historical, historical basis in the town of Hamilton. So under those circumstances and given the limitation of funding to that, as well as only a port, that the, that the amount that was appropriated by CPC only funds a portion of the ultimate amount that was asked for the project, we felt that would have likely passed constitutional muster if challenged. However, ultimately, those types of decisions would be fact-based and would be determined by a code of law in the event that somebody were to challenge it. However, we did feel that there were good arguments in favor of the constitutionality of that particular appropriation, should it be made. of that particular appropriation, should it be made. Thank you.
So I'd like to continue with comment.
Okay. We can't hear you.
So I would like to continue the comment.
Okay. Briefly.
The Mass Historical Commission actually settled this issue decades ago. There is no church-state concern. Over 50 churches across the Commonwealth have received CPA funds. I was involved with a church north of this community that received two different CPA grants. The Mass Historical Commission actually wants these to occur because it invokes historical restriction in perpetuity. So, as we vote in a few minutes on the Town Hall and the historic nature of it, I believe that it is very valuable to support this and I hope that you will vote in favor. The state has settled this already. It's not a conflict if it does not support ministry or the other activities of the church if it is simply for historic preservation, which it is.
Okay. Is there any other questions or comments?
Robert Payne, 224 Forest Street. Following up on his comments, I'm holding a document that lists CPA projects involving churches from 2007 to 2012, five years, which is an incomplete list. But this is what the CPA does as part of its work. And in this, there are similar church projects involving church towers and clocks, including Hatfield, Chelmsford, Quincy, Rowley. And this is just an incomplete list for five years. Also, I would say, if you look at the project done on the church in 2008, you would see that it is listed as the clock of the town of Hamilton. And the clock is actually owned by the town. I found no mention of this in any of the documents. So in my opinion, the question should read, will the church continue, I mean, will the town continue to take care of its own clock as it's done for the last 200 years by caring for the belfry and the clock? Or will we take advantage of the CPA funding? Thank you.
Robert McKean, Whipple Road, South Hamilton. I'd like to make a couple comments about the history of the church. Most of us already know that. It's over 300 years old. It's always been a part of Hamilton. And yes, at one time, the town offices were there. The town meetings were held there. And the separation of church and state clause was also in the Constitution at that time, but it never seemed to be a problem then. $75,000 is a small drop in the bucket. The majority of the money to preserve the church is paid by the parishioners that attend the church. Whether you consider yourself to be a religious person or not, I would ask that you would vote to fund this just because it's part of our community. Thank you.
Jean Ailes, 11 Patton Ridge. I'd like to present David McCullough's book, The Pioneer. He's a historian, one of our nation's most distinguished and honored historians. And he has taken his own place in American history. The United States honors his lifelong efforts for the document, the people, the places, and events that shape America. And this is the Presidential Medal of Freedom citation. This is the history, the beginning, when Cutler, Hutman, covered wagon from the church. And if you go to the church, you'll see a plaque that was presented there to show that in fact, this is a very historical place. Thank you.
My name is Jeff Watson, 36 Norman Road in Hamilton. Some 20 years ago, the church spent over $3 million in renovation work on the old building. So just to put the issue of the belfry and the clock in perspective, this is a small amount of money considering what the church does, has done for itself and what it does for itself on an ongoing basis. When the church, when that renovation work was being done and being talked about, it had been considered for historical purposes, the town said in its, in part of its publication that the church and the cemetery were the crucial aspects of the historical district. It's useful to think about that as we consider this now. We're spending a very large amount of money in the Town Hall, which is quite appropriate. And I understand it. I painted the building inside and out. I understand it. I understand the value of that. But that's a large amount of money that does impact the tax rate. There's the small amount of money that doesn't. And that's in the church, the church building far precedes it historically, the purpose of the Town Hall. And the church takes care of itself largely, too. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? I think we're ready for a vote. Voting is now closed. The motion passes and I so declare. The next two articles, 2-7 and 2-8, are linked. They're separate votes, but they relate to the Town Hall, proposed Town Hall renovation. So we're going to have a presentation regarding that that will cover both articles and then we'll vote on them separately. So, okay, we're going to make the motion for 2-7 first and then do the discussion. So, I recognize Jay Butler.
I move, I move that the town approve Article 2-7 as written in the warrant.
Is there a second? There's a second? Okay. We're now going to have a presentation that will cover both 2-7 and 2-8. Yeah. We'll get it covered. So, okay.
May I speak with you?
Yes, you may.
This grant request was submitted by the Town Hall Building Committee to the CPC for $3 million and ought to lower the effect on the tax rate for the construction costs of this project. CPC has formally discussed this project in a highly favorable light in committee since 2015, and it has been recognized the most important potential grant request for some time. The CPC and subsequently Town Meeting approved the first of several grants for this project, citing in November 2017. And over the past several years, Town Meeting has approved $475,000 in CPC grants. The current grant request is proposed in the form of a 30-year municipal bond. The first year cost of this bond is approximately $169,000. The CPC can well afford this bond payment as the only other bond repayment cost attributed to the CPC is the John J. Donovan Recreation Area, i.e. Sagamore Hill. Last year's bond repayment cost for that 15-year, $1.25 million bond was $110,000. Typically, we can use the 2% surcharge that we get on the tax rate as the amount of funds available in any given year to pay for bond repayment cost. Typically, this is $454,000 a year. So, the $169,000 we're asking and the $110,000 we're carrying forward, that both decrease over time, we can well afford. Yesterday, the Mass Department of Revenue announced that our 2% revenue for 2020 was approximately $480,000. Therefore, we're increasing the funds available for future bond repayments. Now, Mr. Moderator, could I ask you to recognize the Chair of the Town Hall Building Committee, Mike Toomey?
Yes, Mike Toomey.
Mike Toomey, 11 Hickory Lane. I am currently the Chairman of the Hamilton Town Hall Building Committee. I will be brief and to the point. Over the period of almost three years involving hundreds of public meetings, many emails, texts, public information meetings, research, pricing, comparing options, Town Meetings, newspaper updates, townwide survey, Board of Selectmen meetings, fielding questions, and input from many different groups, in particular, the Hamilton Historic Commission and the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board, the Hamilton Board of Selectmen, and the public. We would like to have our architect, Drayton Fair from LLB Architects, present what we believe is the most cost-effective, energy-efficient, and historically correct option to make the Town Hall safe, completely handicap-accessible, up-to-date with all current codes, and a good place for the employees and the residents of Hamilton to conduct business. Please be assured, we have not worked in a vacuum. We have invited many people to get involved and analyzed every suggestion to date. We have made this process as totally transparent as possible, taking into consideration the COVID crisis restraints. Recent meetings have had to take place on Zoom and meeting to face-to-face was almost out of the question. This committee and everyone involved has persevered and voted hundreds of hours to make this project as correct as possible for the people of Hamilton. With that, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Drayton Fair, our architect, to show you the design and where we are at this point.
I recognize the architect.
Thank you very much, Chairman Toomey. For the past couple of years, LLB Architects and myself, Drayton Fair, have had the honor of working on this project. It's a very significant building and one of the centerpieces of the Hamilton Historic District. So, I'm, we have been presenting this for a couple of years, so I think that everyone has a pretty good idea of what the needs are, but I want to just sort of go over some of them quickly with you. You may know the Town Hall has been, has been in the center of Hamilton for about 122 years, and it has undergone some basic upgrades, but has never had a full renovation. And therefore, the building itself is not handicap-accessible. Some of the exterior wood has rotted away and needs to be preserved and repaired. The cupola, of course, needs to be restored as well. Next slide. On the interior, what happened a number of years ago is some of the town offices took over the meeting hall on the second floor and put up a series of office partitions to separate all of the offices. While that was sufficient for a time, unfortunately, the configuration of the room meant that the acoustics were very bad and that it was very distracting for the public and for the staff. So, and it has, it has certainly acquired a lot more storage requirements over the years. So, it's pretty packed up there and it was never really sized for that sort of, that sort of use. Next slide. Another concern that we found is that up in the meeting room area, the exterior walls of the building are actually slightly bowing towards the outside. Now, what we found in our investigations is that this is not an issue of concern, but part of the project is to basically tie the walls together so that there is, there's no more expansion of those spaces. Next page. So, you have a handout in front of you, and this, these next two slides just sort of review some of those particular issues. Some highlights are that the building will be completely handicap-accessible. The major feature of this project is in a small addition on the back that will have a new egress stair and elevator in it. That addition, due to the historic nature of the building, that addition will not be seen from Bay Road. All of the major building systems will be upgraded, HVAC, electrical, and a new fire sprinkler protection system will be constructed within the entire building. We tried very hard to keep all of the offices in the, in the building itself. And we were able to reconfigure the first floor and the second floor in order to keep all those offices in the building, but offer them some more efficient and more private space. So, next slide, please. Quickly walking you through some of the plans. Next slide. The site plan of the building will be very much the same as you, as it is today. The, we are expanding the parking into the DPW yard. The DPW vehicles will come in and out through, on that south side now, instead of coming out through the north. One of the features that you don't necessarily see is that the septic system will be upgraded for the building. You can see on this slide that small addition on the back of the building. So you'll come in on the south and you'll park very similarly to the way, to the way you do now, and then go out on the north. Next slide. Walking through the building, you can see on the lower portion of the slide, that's the new addition. Again, the elevator that will take you all the way down to the basement and all the way up to the stage level as well. So, we brought the major public functions onto the first floor. So, the building department, the health department come down to the first floor and occupy the space that is now the memorial room. The tax assessor stays in the same location. The town clerk stays in the same location. The treasurer stays in the same location. So, most of the major public functions are now on the first floor. What we also tried to do was we kept the major historical features of that first floor and are restoring and preserving them, particularly the double stair on, on the north side, as well as the main hallway and the hallway coming in from the west side. Next slide. On the lower level, we've created a new town vault on that lower level. The existing town vault is the historic one. It's not coming out, but it's much too small for any kind of accessible features. So, the, the new town vault will be accessible and large enough and on the lower level. Next slide. On the upper level, we have modified that so that in the large meeting space, we've taken up a portion of it for some additional offices. There will be offices on the stage level as well, and we've added restroom facilities on, on the upper level as well as renovated them on the lower level. So, right now, there are no restroom facilities on that second level, so there will be restroom facilities on all levels in this plan. Now, the memorial room itself will be moving upstairs so that it now will reoccupy the main meeting room space with the, with the stage and the proscenium arch, and that will once again be able to be used for, for meetings at the Town Hall. be able to be used for meetings at the Town Hall. Next slide. A couple of quick slides just to show you. This slide, it's really just a cleaned-up version of what it is now, because that's really the objective, is to restore and preserve this significant historic structure. Next slide. This is a slide that shows that addition on the exterior. So, this will be the new "main entry" into the building, because it'll be handicap-accessible. Now, we also replaced the ramp on the north side, but we've moved it from the front where it- the existing temporary ramp, if you will, moved it to the rear. It's now a permanent feature, and it's much more connected to the parking and the handicap parking. Next slide. A couple of images of what it's going to look like on the interior, particularly that upstairs area. And this slide sort of outlines the number of boards and committees that we have met with, along with the Building Committee, throughout this process. It has been reviewed with the Board of Selectmen, of course. We've worked very closely with the Hamilton Historic District Commission, with the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board, police and fire. And so, we've really tried to involve everyone in town on this project. It is the Town Hall. It is your Town Hall, so wanted to make sure that there was input from as many citizens as possible. Where will the staff go in the meantime? Well, the town has negotiated the use of Pilgrim Hall, so the town staff will be moving to Pilgrim Hall, and that's where they will be during the approximate 14 months of construction. Next slide. Just a quick schedule to show you that we have been working on this. This is only a partial schedule, of course. We just received construction bids from general contractors. So, the numbers that you'll be reviewing next are numbers, are true numbers that have been given to us by contractors. So, with the approval of this, they will be ready to get going in January. Next slide. This is just an overall schedule, just to show you graphically that this is a multi-year project. We've been working on it for over two years. The green there represents the construction period that we anticipate will start in January and go towards the spring of 2022. With that, we've got some financial information that I think Chairman Toomey would like to review with you, so thank you very much. It's been an honor and privilege.
Good job.
Because the gentleman put his heart and soul in this project, and we have to thank him for many, many hours of torture we put him through. And I mean that sincerely. He'll go to heaven when his time comes, believe me. Now, this is the part that- there's actually two slides here, and this is all the costs to date. Oh, not- I'm sorry, not costs to date. This is the cost of the projects here that you see in front of you. The first part, $609,000. This is the project management costs, all the soft costs. The second grouping is the professional design costs. It's $1,012,8348. I'm going through this as quickly as I can. I'm sure people will have questions, but I'm trying to make it as brief as possible. The general construction estimate, we went out to bid and bid every portion of this project. They're all hard bids. Their contracts in hands were just ready to be signed if this project goes ahead, and that is $6,342,000, for its total of $8,79348. We've also kept a 10% project contingency. Now, this contingency is for unforeseen. It's not a slush fund. It's money that comes back to the town if it's not used. And that's clearly- if it's allocated for something, it's very clearly defined, and like I said, it's not a slush fund. This money doesn't just go to someone's use to make enhancements in the building unless they're absolutely needed. The turnkey project is $8,887,282. Our previous number, our budget that we came to the town with, was $9,708,000. Right now, we're below budget, our anticipated budget, by $820,718. So, we've wanted to be at or below budget. We feel like we've scrutinized this project and kept costs to a minimum. So, if you would go to the next slide, this is the important one. How do we finance this project? We have CPC appropriation. The first one was $75,000 when we started the project off. Town meeting, annual town meeting appropriated $100,000. CPC was $150,000. That was a second appropriation. The 2019 annual town meeting was $75,000. CPC then appropriated $250,000. Town meeting 2019 was $467,767, which was the architectural costs. Now, we're looking for the CPC appropriation of $3 million. We also have $86,360 from an insurance funding, the cupola damage that was covered by the insurance company. Our ask today from the town meeting is $4,683,155.
Okay, Mr. Moderator. Before I open it up to questions from the floor, is there any comments from member of town boards? Ms. Kennedy.
Good morning again, everybody. I have five slides that I'd like to show you regarding the history of Town Hall. The first slide is a rendering, the architect's rendering, from 1897. It incorporates the Federal style, and it portrays classical future features. I'd like to thank Jack Howell for his 2014 History of Town Hall that informs my comments. The next slide shows us the project during construction. It took nine months to complete, due to an abundance of skilled labor who were European immigrants and got the job done very quickly. The next slide shows us three images. In the first one shows us 1899. This building was built for the needs of the 1,600 residents of Hamilton. It drew the community together, serving as a seat of government, a school, a library. It hosted social events such as weddings, theaters, dances, and a junior prom, and it also hosted a jail cell for the occasional miscreant. Up in the top-right corner, you're seeing 1930 Veterans Memorial Ceremony. In fact, World War I soldiers were lodged in our Town Hall. The semicircular driveway houses memorials to all the fallen Hamilton soldiers from all the wars. The next slide, please. Traditionally, if you look at the top, you'll see that there's a bald eagle topping the weather vane. The story goes that it was blown off by a storm. However, in 1975, that eagle was found in the basement of Town Hall with two bullet holes through it. Nobody could explain this. It was repaired in 2002, and it awaits its rightful place on top of the renovated Town Hall. And the last slide, please. This Town Hall has stood here for 122 years without a major renovation, a testament to its intrinsic strength. Today, it remains the proud and dignified representation of our evolving history. It honors our past, and it holds promise for our future.
Thank you. Nick Tensin.
Good morning. I'm representing the Finance Committee, and there's a few things we'd just like to let you know.
Could you get a little closer to the mic?
Is that better? Thank you. From the Finance Committee's perspective, we'd like to let you know a few things. One is, the Finance Committee looked at this from three perspectives. One was the, was this necessary? Number two, had it been vetted properly? And three, does it make sense economically? From a renovation standpoint, I think you've heard all the reasons why it needed to be done. The only other alternative was to build new, and that really did not propose a good option for several reasons. One is that you'd either have to raise the building or, because it's historic, sell it. It had almost nothing because of the condition. And secondly, there's no place to build. So, this was a very good option for us to do the renovations. The second issue had to do with whether the project had been vetted properly, and I have to tell you, over the years, watching the Town Hall Building Committee, they have been extremely diligent, questioning every piece of the construction, and they've vetted this project to the best degree that they can at this point. We're very- our committee, the Board of Selectmen are really pleased with the kind of participation that they had. And finally, what is it- does it make financial sense? When we look at this project, we looked at it, 122-year-old building that hadn't been renovated, and it is a substantial cost. On the flip side, it's a building that'll probably be here for 75 years. We will be financing it over 30 years, but it'll be here for much longer than that. So, from an economic standpoint, it did make sense. To give you more specifics on what it will cost you and me for this project, based on the current funding that is being requested and the estimated interest rates over the next 30 years, it is estimated, and we're just going to take one year, and that'll be the first year. The first year is the only one we can really put our hands on. It was estimated that it'll be less than 20 cents per thousand on an average home. On an average home, that would be about $320 a year for this project. I'm sorry, $120 a year on this project, not 300. It's $30 a quarter. Anyway, that's our analysis of it, and we think this is the best move forward for the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll open up to the floor for questions and comments. Please go to-
Duxie, Restic Street. I want to know, in the contract, is there going to be a penalty if the contractor cannot meet his due date? Sometimes things happen, and it goes on and on and on. So, will there be a financial penalty, and if not, why not, for the contract to do this job?
Mr. Toomey.
You're talking about liquidated damages if they don't meet the schedule, is that what you're saying? Okay. There are no liquidated damages written into the contract right now. There could be, but usually, there's a cost associated with that, because they then have to ensure that they do meet the schedule with a cost penalty, so they put money into the project to do that. Right now, it's not in the contract. We don't have a contract, but that's something that the town council, legal council, would probably look at, and if it was appropriate, they would add that clause.
Steve Dexter, 8 Honeysuckle Road in South Hamilton, Massachusetts. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm a member of the City Hall Restoration Commission in Gloucester, which started in 2004. I ran a business in Gloucester, just retired a couple of years ago, and there was a committee set up by John Valdemeyer, and we were sitting in the building one day, and we found out the city hall tower was 19 inches out of center and ready to collapse. So, all the city officials had to move off premises, and we became the sort of managers of the building. Essex came, and we had a little battle here and there, but we decided the character of the community is the city hall of Gloucester, so we kept it. CPA funds, private funds, by the way. Essex came down to take a look at the building and see what they did. They rebuilt their building. Wyndham was thinking about taking theirs down. They rebuilt theirs. It adds a lot to the community. We have two things left to go since 2004, electrical system and the sprinkler system. And now, we have people that come into Gloucester and love it. Visitors come in and like it very much. We also have the citizens of Gloucester very proud of the building, so don't let this thing go by. And I agree with everything they've said about the building, the character, and it's worth it. We've had a lot of private funds given to our commission. When you talk about the eagle, we had an eagle on top, and the wind blew it down. And about four, five years later, a gentleman in the Gloucester community paid for the reinstate the eagle on top of the tower. So, please, vote yes for this. It means a lot to the community. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Lawrence.
Jack Lawrence, 105 Rock Maple. I'm a member of the Town Hall Building Committee. Back in the early '90s, when I was a member of the Board of Selectmen, we addressed the issue of handicap accessibility in Town Hall. It was a big deal, because obviously, we were out of code compliance and out of accessibility compliance, and we looked at a lot of different issues. We even went so far as to get prices for elevators and so forth. And ultimately, we went the Band-Aid approach. We kicked the can down the road, and we put that ramp on the north side, that temporary ramp. That was 30 years ago, and we've been kicking that can down the road ever since. And so, I've always been a skeptic. I joined the Town Hall Building Committee to get a better idea of what was involved, because there were some big numbers being thrown around. It turns out, this is a perfectly wonderful old building, built out of old-growth wood. It's tremendously well-built, and it just needs some tender, loving care. Pieces are flying off the cupola. It needs a little bit of work, like most wooden buildings do. And after two years of study and picking our way through all the details of this project, I really think we've got something honed down that's a really good package. Now, many of you are probably wondering why we're undertaking this when we're in the middle of a plague. Well, the fact is, it's a great time to do it. Construction companies are looking for work. The rates have never been lower. It's a phenomenal time to get this job finally done. The can has got to stop rolling down the road. I hope you're all going to vote yes. Thank you.
Mr. Clark.
Forrester Clark, Sagamore Street, and I'd like to just make a few comments. As a 40-year public servant in Massachusetts, as a selectman, a member of the Great and General Court, and a candidate for statewide office, I've probably visited more Town Halls than anybody in this room and practically anybody in the state. And I can tell you that our Town Hall, from a practical point of view, reflecting how our community's- And I can tell you that our Town Hall, from a practical point of view, reflecting how our community stands, is one of the best. And we are be very proud of it and what it looks like from the outside. But it suffers a problem that all Town Halls in the world suffer. It gets overcrowded. It gets busier and busier. And you have more different jobs and more different locations and moves to go. And you have to renovate at some point. And that's what we're trying to do. And I think that the design, which I had absolutely nothing to do with except a small comment a year ago, is great. You're going to keep the frame of the outside of the building is going to look right. You're going to have good access through the elevators. You're using the designs I've seen set up. People have taken time to make sure that things are in the right order in the right places. And I think the whole plan makes very good sense. We have to change to keep up with the world, and you have to be prepared to do that. And when you're in there and you're working around it, and you're going to find the places you want to go, you can find them easily and well-accessed. You've got good restrooms, and you've got a really nice presentation in the front main hall upstairs. So if I may put it simply in the words of our great philosopher, Whoopi Goldberg, I think we ought to suck it up and get out there and do our job and support this program. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments?
Jean Pierre Minoir, 297 Molton Street. As a member of the Town Hall Building Committee, I just want to support the project to renovate and modernize the Town Hall building for the benefit it will bring to the town and the town employee. The accessibility improvement, the upgrade HVAC equipment, the fire protection, and the better office layout will make it a better and safer place to work and to meet. The design preserved the character of the historic building by keeping the double stairs on the north side of the building and maintaining the large Town Hall meeting room on the second floor. With the OPM and the architect, we got a good bid for the construction, and I recommend that the meeting approved the start of the construction in the next few months.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I think we're ready for a vote. Oh, okay.
Sam Vale, 315 Bridge Street. I just wanted to thank everybody for putting in the time and effort on this project. Clearly, you've vetted it. You've got great pricing, and I think it's certainly something it sounds like we need. I just want to raise the issue that, as we think about how we're spending all of our dollars, and I recognize the Finance Committee is in favor of this, I may be misreading our debt service schedule, but the debt we're about to take on pretty much doubles the total amount of outstanding debt at 4.8 million. And as I think about that decision and the impact it makes, and the impact that it makes for us to be able to do other projects, you know, to support the rest of the community and the impact it makes on all the taxpayers that we're about to increase. A lot of those folks here attend the schools, and I think we all know, or for those who don't, there's a lot of work and dollars that are needed for those schools. For example, the field we're sitting on here today, the kids, when they make it to the playoffs, they're not allowed to play their games here, because the field conditions are unsafe, the track, et cetera. So as we've had many other meetings about facilities, whether it be schools, turf fields, other things like that, those things now, my biggest concern will have a pretty big impact. And when you talk about the tax rate and the cost per home, and looking at the average cost per home, it's the schools. For the realtors in the room, no, that's what attracts the next generation of families here and helps drive up those prices and allows the taxes to come through. So I personally believe that this is too expensive a project for this town. I have no doubt it's the right price, and I don't have the solution to that. But I also know that there's a lot of other projects that frankly will have a larger impact on more people than this one. So thank you for your time and all the efforts that have been put into this to date.
Any other questions or comments? I sense we are ready to move to a vote. Okay. This is the vote on 207, voting the CPA funds. This requires a two-thirds vote. So we'll have 30 seconds to register your vote, starting now. Thank you. Voting is now closed. The motion passes, and I so declare. Article 2-8, Town Hall Building Project. I recognize Darcy Dale.
Darcy Dale, Woodbury Street. I'm also on the Board of Selectmen. I move that the town will vote to authorize the treasurer to borrow $4,683,155.25 in accordance with the General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, or any other enabling authority for the purpose of funding the design, construction, renovations, and improvements to and equipping the Town Hall located at 577 Bay Road, excluding costs to be paid from the Community Preservation Act under Article 2020/112-7, and including the design and construction of the renovations and improvements, to a temporary Town Hall facility and relocation costs and all other incidental or related costs, and further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to apply for and accept any federal, state, and/or other grants or loans available for the project, and to enter into any and all agreements related thereto, provided, however, that the appropriation authorized hereunder shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters of the town to assess taxes in excess of the amount allowed under Proposition 2.5, so-called, for the amounts required to pay principal and interest on bonds or notes issued for the purposes set forth herein, and further, that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payments of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Okay, please go to a microphone. No, please go to the microphone. Okay. Any questions or discussion? Okay, if not, we'll move to a vote. You'll have 30 seconds to enter your vote. This only requires a majority vote. Sorry, two-thirds. This requires a two-thirds vote. So starting now, you have 30 seconds to vote. Voting is now closed. The motion passes, and I so declare. Article 2-12, Master Plan. I recognize Rosemary Kennedy.
I move that the town transfer $150,000 from free cash for the purpose of funding a master plan, including all incidental and related costs.
Is there a second? Ms. Kennedy.
So this master plan will help us plan for our future. Who are we now? Where are we going? What's important to us? A master plan will plan all aspects of our town: housing, what kind of business development, open land, what's important to the town. And it's important that we hear people's voices. This is a pretty comprehensive master plan. It would take about six months or so to complete, and the goal is to hire a consultant who'll be able to plan for us, well, with us, actually. And we want a lot of citizen involvement with this. And that's why it's cost so much. It takes time. There are lots of meetings and public hearings, so that everybody's input will count.
Thank you. Joe Demelwitz.
Thank you, everybody. I'll be brief. A moment ago, you heard one of your fellow citizens comment about the fact that we have other costs coming up in the future. I prepared my remarks, but I'm going to go off the hip. We have other costs and other things competing interests. A master plan will help us take a look at all of that stuff together as a community, identify the path forward, prioritize things, schedule things. It'll give us a way to plan for our future. You're absolutely right. There are other things that we need to take care of. We also need to take care of the Town Hall. We have issues that are going to be coming up at the schools. How do we move forward with that? Does the town want to grow? Does it not want to grow? How do we grow? Where do we grow? The master plan will take all of those things into consideration. It will utilize a consultant over the course of more like 12 months, Rosie. We'll have about a year of time where the consultant will meet with us. Good news out of the pandemic is everybody's gotten used to Zoom. We can do virtual meetings. We can get as much citizen input and build consensus around the things that will make Hamilton great for the next 25 to 50 years. This is a small amount of money. It comes out of free cash. It won't affect your tax rate. And it's something that will help give your Boards of Selectmen, FinCom, School Committee members a roadmap for how to get, thank you, I lost that word for a minute, give us a roadmap for how to make decisions moving forward. I think that, you know, the last two years of planning from the Town Hall Building Committee shows us that when everybody gets together and pitches in and shares ideas, we come up with a good plan. This is a good plan. This will help give us a good plan for the whole time. Thank you very much.
Any questions or comments? Please go to the microphone.
Betsy Spang, Tobacco Road. I've been in the town about 18 years, and this is probably at least the third, probably the fourth, master plan that we've done. I fail to understand why we spend the money on master plans and then don't follow them. What is the master plan to do if there's supposed to be 20 years, and yet every five years, we spend more money? Right now, we've just approved a whopping amount of money. I don't understand why we want to go and spend more money on things that we probably can't afford at this time. I suggest that we table this, at least for two years, until we know what's going to be going on and what finances we really have. Thank you.
Just to clarify, the last master plan for the town was done in 2004. The last town-wide master plan was done in 2004. I know there've been other plans. There've been housing production plans, minor pieces of a master plan, but we haven't done a complete, comprehensive look at the town since that time.
Sir.
Rick Mitchell, 36 Rock Maple Ave. I've been on the Planning Board 18 years, and just to answer as Joe did, the last master plan we did was in 2004, and it has not been updated since. We just did a housing production plan, and we updated the housing component. But the rest of the seven other components, we have not done. This is actually critical for the town determining its future. We're really at a crossroads. As many of you may know, we're going to be bumping up against our 2.5 levy limit soon. We need to figure out how we want this town to grow, how we're going to pay for it, what we want it to look like. And those people, like myself, on the Planning Board, the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, the School Committee, need to hear from you what you want this town to look like and how we're going to pay for it and how it's going to impact the character of the town. So I strongly urge supporting us.
Mr. Lawrence.
Jack Lawrence, 105 Rock Maple. I'd just like to echo what the FinCom put in their advisory part of their report this year for this meeting. And that is that any master plan that we do for the town of Hamilton is going to be absolutely worthless unless we do it in concert with the schools' planning and with Wenham. We are joined at the hip with the schools and a number of other joint projects. And it doesn't do us any good to think that we're going to do certain things if Wenham was not going to join to be able to do it with us, to come up with their percentage. If we do this thing in isolation, nothing useful will come out of that exercise. So I think it's extremely important that we do have professional... I think it's extremely important that we do have professional assistance in this so that we can plan out what we're going to do for the next 10 to 20 years in this town. But we need to do it in concert. The schools are a huge part of our budget. They are the elephant in the room. And what Wenham can do, and what we can do, and what the schools can do, all needs to be in concert. At Town Meeting, Annual Town Meeting, we voted them $250,000 for planning purposes. This will be another $150,000. There needs to be a joint committee that takes those three entities into account and has input from all three entities to make this thing a useful exercise. I think it's extremely important. Thank you.
Mr. Farrell.
Sean Farrell, Board of Selectmen Chair, 15 Hamilton Ave. Just to address Jack's point there, I totally agree with it. In kind of recent news, if you pay attention to the Board of Selectmen, we've just recently had a joint meeting with the Wenham BOS, and it was very encouraging. We talked a lot about kind of what's going on in Hamilton and also what's going on with Wenham and Hamilton with our shared services. We shared that we're doing our master plan or would look to do our master plan if it's approved at Town Meeting today. And they wholeheartedly agreed that we should kind of join forces in some capacity reviewing our shared services and how our master plan can benefit both towns. We've also had a lot of good communications with the School Committee, and we'll also be pulling them in as well when we start our master planning if it passes today. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Phil Monahan, Red Coach Road. I just have a couple of questions to the earlier point. I've lived in this town for over 20 years, and I have seen many multiple master plans as well. The timeframe that was indicated for this was 10 to 20 years. What was the timeframe for the last one? That was 18 years ago. As that timeframe goes on, who's going to own this plan? What person, department, committee will take ownership of this plan for the 10 to 20 years? And as it rolls over? Who's going to be in charge of maintaining it and changing it over 10 to 20 years as needs change, and we decide we need a bigger pool and baseball fields and turf field at the high school? And what are the associated costs with that maintenance going forward? It seems clear from the last couple of votes. Mr. Toomey? It seems clear from the, the last couple of votes, Mr. Toomey and his committee did an excellent job with town hall. I'd like to ask Mr. Toomey to volunteer for that job, too.
So, a couple of things. The two thousand and four master plan was done before you changed your form of government. You had a three-member Board of Selectmen, and you'll all remember, in a town-administered time. You've changed your form of government since then, so some of the parts of the plan would have fallen out of, you know, alignment with what the town was doing at the time. We have, I don't anticipate a change in town form of government this time. The plan could be implemented. We, we would try to get our, I'll scratch that. We will require our consultant to create a five-year strategic plan as part of the master plan, and every five years, we'll have a small committee of people working to implement the most, uh, the, the, the highest priority items. As we move through the hi, the first five years of priorities, we'll, sorry, we'll reassess the, update the strategic plan and do another five-year strategic plan. That would be done by town staff with assistance from the various boards and committees that already do all their very valuable work in town. The Planning Board, Board of Selectmen, the FinCom, Zoning Board, School Committee, and we'd continue to do that. That, the, the purpose of this master plan is to give us a roadmap for the next twenty years and then take it off in five-year increments going forward. That's how I see this rolling out. Does that, does that answer your question?
One last thing was, who, what department? Is it just going to be one committee? That's just going to be ongoing? That's going to have a revolving door of people going through it? Or who's going to be the owner?
The Town Manager's Office will, will own the program.
Any other questions or comments?
Tosh Blake, Sagamore Street. Um, I think the town seems pretty good as it is. Save the money and vote no.
The other questions or comments? Okay, um, I think we're ready for a vote, so, again, you'll have thirty seconds. Stand to your vote. The motion passes, and I so declare. Article three dash four, Citizens Petition. I recognize Bill Heaney.
Good morning. My name is Bill Heaney, and I'm a parent here in town and have lived here about twenty years, and I've been very reluctant to get involved in town politics. Honestly, I'd rather not be here today. I'd rather be coaching or doing some other volunteerism. But today I'm here because in September...
Mr. Heaney, would you first read the motion?
Oh.
And then?
Certainly. So it's... So the motion is to move for Article three dash four, as it appears in your pamphlet?
In the warrant.
In the warrant.
Is there a second? Okay, Mr. Heaney. Could we, okay, can we just have the second again?
Second.
Okay. Okay. Could we, I just ask you, just for the record, the, your name?
Beth Murphy, Asbury Street.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Heaney.
Sorry about that, and thank you, Beth. I am a, I'm a rookie here at presenting a town meeting. So just a little bit of background about the actual article that's on today's warrant. On September third, the Hamilton-Wenham School District announced in a press release that local COVID data forces Hamilton-Wenham to open school year with remote learning. So our schools went from a hybrid system to a remote learning in a very quick, poorly thought-out pivot. That decision still impacts the students in our town. At that time is when I got a little bit involved in this with Dan Pascarello from Wenham, and we started reviewing what led to that decision in September. That led us to a Citizens Petition. We wanted to be involved, and we want to make a difference, and I want to thank all the people that signed the Citizens Petitions. Wenham had over a hundred and twenty signatures. Hamilton had over a hundred and sixty signatures, and that's what got our article on the warrant here today. After that petition was submitted, we made, really made some very good headway. We had some great meetings with the superintendent. We met with the Board of Health, and we are on today's warrant. From those meetings, or since those meetings with the Board of Health, they have remanded and restated their position, and I think we're heading in the right direction. Last month, the town of Wenham, at their special town meeting, voted on this article, and it passed in Wenham and is now part of the, the Wenham bylaws. Here in Hamilton, we need to finish the process. The purpose of the petition, and I can boil it down to a very simple description, there is going to be a set of metrics or guidelines that govern how our schools are opened up, and I think everybody here today wants our schools to be opened up in as safest fashion as possible for the students and for the community as a whole. When the superintendent is looking to make the decision, if she gets a set of guidelines from the Board of Health and a set of guidelines from the, the Americans Pediatrician Society, the Massachusetts Pediatrician Society, the Massachusetts Department of Secondary Education, and the CDC, if there's conflicting metrics or guidelines, it makes it very, very difficult for the superintendent to make a decision. And that is exactly what happened in September. We had very conflicting guidelines from what the local Board of Health had provided to the superintendent and what DESI and the CDC were suggesting. We want to avoid that conflict, and one way to avoid that conflict is to require that our local Board of Health do not promulgate or put forward any restrictions that are stricter or greater than what the CDC and DESI have already put forward. Simply put, we don't want to make it more difficult to open our schools. We want to open our schools in a safe fashion, but we want to make it as streamlined and as easy as possible for our superintendent to make those decisions. What it really comes down to is, the Board of Health is a well-intentioned, small group of citizens. There's no medical doctors on the board. They meet a couple of times a month. The CDC, the Department of Secondary Education, the American Pediatrician Association, and the Mass Pediatricians Association, all have the most current data. They have the best science. They have the da, uh, the most current data, and they are the ones that are really best qualified to be setting the guidelines for our superintendent to follow when she's opening the schools. So if you are here today, and most of you probably have already made up your mind which way you're voting, I get that's how it goes, but if you want to keep it simple, if you vote yes today, you're acknowledging that the most qualified people to set the guidelines for opening our schools is the CDC and DESI and not our local Board of Health. If you are voting no on today's article, you are voting that the Board of Health is better qualified than the CDC and DESI and the American Pediatrician Association and the Mass Pediatrician Association when it comes time for setting our guidelines. So with that, I'd like to thank everybody for coming today. I do respect that everybody's going to have different opinions today, and I think it's really good to see the process follow through. Wenham did vote this through last month, and I think Hamilton needs to do so today. Thank you.
Christina Hargrove?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Christina Shank Hargrove from the FinCom. After the warrant was printed and we discovered that the Citizens Petition would be going forward to a vote today, FinCom voted unanimously to, unfavorably as to this petition. The, the Citizens Petition was brought as described by the, by the proponent, proponent. The, it is an attempt to limit the, our local Board of Health's ability to make the guidelines. Our local Board of Health looks at the circumstances in our town and makes recommendations and guidelines, and this takes, attempts to take away that Board of, the Board of Health's discretion and requires that they follow the guidelines published by the DESE and the Massachusetts Public Health. Even if this is passed, this will only be advisory. It is not binding on the Board of Health, and for all of these reasons, the FinCom voted to recommend unfavorable action on this petition.
Any, okay, Mr. Olson.
Bill Olson, Board of Selectmen, four nineteen Highland Street. Bill Heaney, thank you for bringing, you know, this attention to the town and the board. I think further discussion has, has let us understand that the, the tough decision really is on the, on the superintendent and the school board to decide to close the school or not, and their job is really collect all the information from everyone, make that decision, from, from citizens, parents, teachers, faculty, you know, Board of Health, local Board of Health, CDC, DESI, things like that. So the Board of Selectmen voted, you know, recommend unfavorable action because we don't want to limit the opinions of all those important boards, because we really give a lot of credit to our local Board of Health to keep our numbers low, keep this town healthy, and they're well-qualified. So we don't want to limit their ability to give their opinion so that the school board and the superintendent can then make that decision with all those opinions and not have it be fettered or limited. So, thank you.
Ma'am?
Anna Seidzik, two two seven Highland Street. Disclosure, I'm also a member of the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School Committee, but I'm speaking today as a private citizen. I actually don't really want to comment on the pros and cons of, of which Board of Health was more correct. As Mr. Heaney indicated, this happened in September at a time when, frankly, there was a lack of guidance from the state on a variety of issues, so I think it's important to understand the historical timeliness. In a pandemic, Boards of Health, School Committees, DESI, private citizens, town governments, none of us had ever navigated this before. So I think the timing is important. Since the petition was filed, the state Board of Health has changed their guidance. The local Board of Health also, in response to that guidance, has also changed, and frankly, continues to change. It changed again last week from a state level. So my objection is not really on the merits of, of what health metrics to use. I think it's a conversation for a different day. My objection to the petition is that I don't think it's good policy to dictate public health through a popular vote at, at a town meeting or at the ballot. I also want to speak up in defense of our local Boards of Health, both in Hamilton and Wenham. They are populated by very knowledgeable, thoughtful people with tremendous medical background in many cases. They've worked in our best interest for the entirety of the pandemic, and I do think they're looking at the problem holistically. So I'm in opposition to the petition, not because I have a feeling one way or the other about the health data, but I think it's better governance to let our local Boards of Health do their job. They've done it admirably. I applaud their work this entire time, and I think it sets a dangerous precedent to take public health decisions out of the power of the body and pointed to do so, the local board, who is listening to the state Boards of Health, the CDC, the American Academy of Pediatrics, all of those people that Mr. Heaney spoke about. The local Boards of Health are listening, but they're trying to triangulate that with many other pieces of data, and I think we should allow them to do their job. I do want to give pub, public credit to the local boards. Thank you for your help in this very difficult time, but I appreciate the petitioner's desire to get kids back in school. I think everyone feels that same way. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments?
Mary Jane Brown, fifty-eight Molton Street. I do appreciate the Citizens Petition and the role that that plays in town government. I think the more people who get involved in town issues, the better for our outcomes. But to echo a lot of what Anna just said, this petition to me seems to be a reaction to a snapshot in time that no longer reflects the situation we're in, and I encourage a no vote. Much has changed at the state level in terms of guidance at, at DESI and at the Department of Public Health since September. The Board of Health has clarified and maintains that their guidance is just that, to the school's guidance. Their work has been diligent and transparent. Their commitment to public health is guided by science and metrics and carries no weight of mandate in closing the schools, where in fact, their only jurisdiction is over the kitchens. Additionally, the second point in this petition requiring the use of the key, key municipality standard, I believe is dangerously myopic and denies the reality that our schools have choice students from neighboring communities and that we do not live in a sealed bubble. Our school community is connected to the Greater North Shore and beyond by our commuters and other economic activity. I think it's foolish to limit the Board of Health's school guidance to the Hamilton Town Line. Thank you to the Board of Health for their work, for their guidance, and please vote no.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we're ready for a vote. Voting is now closed. The motion is defeated, and I so declare. Before I call for a motion to adjourn, I just remind you as you, oh, okay, I guess we're going to have a brief speech from...
No real speech, folks. I just, I just want to remind everybody that even though we've passed Article two dash eight for the Town Hall project, there still will be a dead exclusion vote at the Rec Center on December third. It's very important that all of you show up for that and encourage your neighbors to show up for it as well so that we can pass it as well there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. On your way out, please exit in a socially-distanced way and drop your electronic voting clicker in the box. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All those in favor? Aye. Thank, thank you all very much for coming.